Good morning, study session, Nogales Housing Authorities Board of Commissioners meeting, 10:00 AM, Tuesday, June 24, 2025, City Hall conflicts, Council chambers. Call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pleasure of these?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the beloved North American Union. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every sea and sky, for all.
Thank you. Workshop. Thanks, Mr. But.
Thank you, Mayor.
Long time no see. Maritza, would you please continue with item three workshop? Number one, dedication and to dedicate to discussion and reviewing potential options for the development of a standard operation procedure SOP governing the use and/or lease of Nogales Housing Authority facilities and common area of space to ensure equitable access and benefits to tenants. Casa de Anza Gym, 350 Western Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, and Casas de Anza, multi-purpose room 651, North Lake Lou Street, Nogales, Arizona. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chairman Maldonado, and Board of Commissioners. Yes, this is a study session. During the June 4 meeting, we briefly discussed the use of NHA's common area spaces, facilities, and it was recommended to hold this study session so we could obtain more information in an attempt to identify best practices and/or to determine how we want to manage these facilities to ensure fair and equitable access and benefits to our tenants. So, in order to provide as much information as possible within the timeframe allotted, I broke down the study session into three objectives. The first one being current practices, exploring options, and to develop recommendations. In the folders you received, you'll find information pertaining to the three objectives. And under current practices, I just want to point out that you'll find a resolution, NHA Board of Commissioners, number 210-11-03, which is a community room policy. This policy highlights how the room is made available to residents and non-public housing residents, along with rules and regulations for the uses of facility. This resolution and policy refers to it as a community room, being that we don't have any other room, that room would later be referred to as the multi-purpose room. In the same section of your folder, you'll find order number 2022-04-024, and that is an order authorizing the city to enter into a license agreement with Circles of Peace to occupy that same building for the period of 47, from the period of 47, 2022 to 47, 2025, for a reasonable amount of $1. Note, this order or agreement was made between the City of Nogales and Circles of Peace, not NHA. Therefore, NHA was not involved nor accountable for collecting the set annual sum of $1. We do not have any type of agreement or policy on file for the use of the gym. So with that being said alone, you can see the inconsistencies that exist throughout and throughout time. We're looking at, I mean, dating back to 2010 up until now. So, within the time that I've been here, we've established partnerships with these organizations that were already using the facilities and understandings for the use of the facilities. However, nothing has been set, instilled, or officially made a policy. The two organizations that we're partnered up with right now are Circles of Peace, using the multi-purpose room, and Centro Comunitario Los Nogales, who uses the gym facility, along with other community members that are willing to volunteer their time in providing either workshops, training, classes, zumba, basketball, whatever the case may be. Some of the procedures that we have established verbally include, but are not limited to maintaining sign-in sheets, and within these sign-in sheets, we do identify residents because of the address. We ensure that we create and distribute flyers that are distributed to our tenants to make sure that they are aware of the activities made available for them in these buildings as well. Both organizations know that our tenants have priority to use the facilities. NHA pays for all utilities and provides maintenance for both facilities. NHA has control of the access of the gym and provides custodial services to the gym. And currently, there, as you can see, there is no consistency. So what we want here, hopefully, is to be able to establish some kind of operating procedure for the management of the use of the facilities unless we do want to just have these two organizations have exclusive use to the gym and have them provide the services. But Mr. Estes will provide the legal side of that.
I can do that now. So I think there would be some issues with providing for and having exclusive use of the facilities by these entities, just under the HUD regulations and things. When HUD is, you know, funding these properties, funding the costs and expense for a lot of this, for the facility, for the community room and the gym, they expect that those facilities are available for the residents that live in those, you know, the buildings associated with those rooms. So I think that you're in good stead or practice with being able to allow them to use the facilities on a regular schedule, but also that the, those facilities, the gym and the community room, are then available to the residents on those times and hours where these organizations aren't providing their services, for example, weekends and nights, early mornings, different things like that, so that the residents, excuse me, still have the use and benefit of the facilities that were designed for those residents. So I think that's important to remember and to keep in mind when looking at how to proceed with these agreements is what was the underlying basis for building the gym? What was the underlying basis for the community room? You know, it was there as an amenity to provide for these residents, because although, you know, they are low-income residents, you want to make sure that they still have the same amenities and opportunities that other similar apartments or places have. So you want to make sure that you continue to provide that. But you also have the opportunity, the ability, to have these agencies come in and provide these services, which, you know, from the tracking sheet, some of the residents are using those services, not as much as the outside general public. I mean, according to the sheet, you had a total of 25 housing participants out of a total participation of 250. So you'd like to see a higher percentage of the housing participants using those services. You know, and I don't know if maybe the services just aren't what those housing participants need, or if there's timing issues or things like that, we could probably look into that to see how we can adjust or make sure that the residents are getting a good beneficial use from those services that are being provided by those two agencies. You know, so that's one thing. I would suggest that whatever council wants to do, that we keep it as opposed to a lease agreement, that we keep it as a license. Typically, leases are exclusive use. You know, you lease a facility, you have the exclusive use and right for that facility. A license is just what it is. It's a license, an authorization to use that facility under those specific terms of the license. So we would still identify the programs and things that would be provided, hours and different things like that. But under a license, the Housing Authority would continue to maintain the property, the utilities, all of those things, because they're just essentially, you know, for example, like, under the community room policy, you have a policy where the community room is available to non-public housing residents and organizations to use it if they provide for, you know, submit an applicant or request to use it and get an assigned time and things like that. So you have that flexibility with a license, so that you can still use that facility for all these other opportunities and projects. So those are the main legal issues that we should look at. Like Maritza said, you know, we should have a written policy for how both of these facilities are used, you know, and it may be as simple as taking the current community room policy and adjusting that and using it for the gym, because it looks like it's a good policy. It may need to be adjusted based off of, you know, their use is more of a regular use as opposed to a, you know, one-time use or something like that. So we can look at having that in the policy as well. The other thing that we just have to be considerate of is, you know, the fees and costs that we charge, we're only charging a dollar. So that is essentially, you know, a no charge for the use of the facility, which can be done based off of certain criteria, you know. You have the gift and loan clause issues where the, you know, government can't give or loan funds or money or resources to a private entity, even a nonprofit. But there are certain exceptions. For example, that entity is providing services that the city would otherwise provide, then you can say, well, they are providing the services that the city would otherwise provide, so we can give them that benefit of the dollar a year use of that facility, because they are essentially taking up and filling a gap that the city currently is not filling. And I think that the programs, from what I've seen, that the programs that these entities offer are programs and things that the city could or would offer through its program, I mean, if it had that capability. But it's, you know, it's great that we've got a nonprofit that's able to fill that gap. And then that way, the city doesn't have to, you know, staff or employ individuals to do that. The cost to the city would be, you know, a lot greater, so that you can look at those types of relationships and that benefit to be able to do and say, you know, yeah, we can do a $1 a year use agreement for this agency in providing these specific services to our residents. And with a primary focus being on the housing residents and then also the general population as well. That's all I got to say about that.
Mr. Estes, you know, this was developed, obviously, in concurrence with the residents, obviously, to support the residents. Obviously, the residents have always had, you know, first draw at all events and all that. This, you know, these are events or exercises or educational functions being done through, you know, the nonprofit that was created that came to us to support, you know, not just, obviously, the whole community, but we have never looked at looking away from servicing the residents. They have always had, you know, priority and, you know, the lack of, you know, use of them is, I don't think it's something that we can control. You know, this is offered to them, you know, and I think, you know, these people are doing a tremendous job in both Circle of Peace and Centro Comunitario Los Nogales have done a tremendous job in all these events that they do, the exercises, the classes, and, you know, keeping the, you know, young elderly and everybody, you know, from A to Z, trying to have them work and study and keep active. You know, legally, what is said that we have to do, but, you know, I push that we, you know, continue to have these people and not chase them away, because I think it's something very strong that we have and have developed in the last two, three years. So what is it we need to do?
So, yes, Mayor, I'm not saying in any way that, you know, these organizations should be not allowed to use the facilities or anything. I'm just establishing what the, you know, the basic parameters of these types of agreements, you know. I think that, you know, what we have in place with regard to the current license, that can be looked at and adjusted if necessary. But, you know, I think in the past, there were some conversations with regard to a lease and stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the type of agreement to be able to use the facilities, you know, that we document and make sure that we've got, you know, a good list or description of the programming that they're providing, what they're doing on a regular basis, you know, just so that we have that knowledge and information that supports this $1 a year use, which is, like I said, not a problem when they're providing services that the city would otherwise provide. And these services that they're providing are great services, you know. And then also, just so that we have a regular review to make sure that the housing residents are being looked at and being considered and stuff. I mean, and I'm just looking at numbers. Again, I don't know what the underlying basis or reason is. This, you know, for example, the Yada meetings, you've got two housing participants, but you have 83 youth participants. So it looks like, and that's their greatest program, it's got 90 participants, where, you know, out of the 250. So it looks like an amazing program. You know, and the question just is, is, you know, are the youth in those housing units, you know, are they getting the information? You know, maybe they just don't want to participate. You know, you can't, clearly, you're not going to force them to participate, but just making sure that there's a follow-up when you see a disproportionate number like that between, you know, 83 youth and two housing participants. And, you know, that's not to say that they're not getting the information or stuff like that, but it's always great to make sure that you have regular reviews of the programming and of the use to make sure that it is continuing to provide those benefits for the housing participants. Maybe it's a timing issue, maybe there's a better time during the day or different things like that that can be looked at to encourage more of the youth to participate. Maybe there just aren't as many youth in those housing units, so they're not, you know, there's not going to be a higher number. I don't know what the underlying information is, but you just, just from a numbers perspective, you look at that and say, okay, you know, is there a way that we can increase that participation for the residents when you see that two residents participated and 83 outside youth participated, which I think, you know, the fact that that one has such high number shows that that's a great program that's beneficial to the community, because you're getting that much participation in a program where, you know, these other ones are, you know, 25, 5, 30, you know, that one is their top performing program. But from a legal perspective, I think we are in line. We just want to make sure that we have that policy in place for both the community room and the gym, and that everybody is on the same page, that the license agreements are the same for the use of both facilities, and that everything matches up and lines up. And I think it does fall within the guidelines of HUD, you know. These are, you know, rooms that are welcome to be used by outside agencies to provide those services, but then also that they're, these rooms and facilities are able to be used by the housing participants as well.
Did we have any issues when they came down and they just did our review?
No, not with the facilities. But if I may add, I completely agree with everything that's been said. As a matter of fact, I'm very excited. We're not pushing anybody away, and I did reach out to both organizations. And under exploring options, you'll find they both submitted a declaration of the purpose of use for these facilities and how they're willing to continue providing the services. And we would never find this much or organizations that are willing to provide so many services and dedicate so much time for free. Okay, so all these are nonprofit organizations, and they provide services completely for free. They're the ones that go out and recruit their teachers, their instructors, whatever the case may be. We don't do any of that. So yes, Chairman Maldonado, on that note, there's no way we'd be able to fill those shoes. I think what we need, as Mr. Estes said, is to establish some kind of procedures as to what our expectations are and to follow that. In reference to the actual tally you're looking at, that is from Circles of Peace, not from the gym. So Circles of Peace was already established, and I'm not sure their recruitment process, and they're the ones that actually had the lease up until April. So my communication with their director was, can you just provide what you're providing and identify how many of our tenants are there? On the other side of it, in the actual gym, I established, because they didn't have any kind of license agreement or any type of agreement for that matter, I established that partnership with them. And they come to me and they say, this is what we're offering. We create the flyers, we distribute the flyers, we ensure that all our tenants have that, they are under the understanding if they're providing robotics and they have five spaces, five of our students, five of our tenants show up, and three from the community, those five have to go to our tenants, because they do have to have priority, and they understand that. We've established that, but we don't have anything formal. So I think we just need to make sure that whatever we're offering, these organizations or the facilities, not even the organizations, whatever our expectations are for the use of both facilities, that it's persistent across the board and that we actually establish procedures, set procedures of what our expectations are to be able to provide these services.
Go ahead.
Maritza, besides these two nonprofits, Centro Comunitario and Circles of Peace, is the gym being used for other purposes? You know, I know that the Housing Authority opens the doors for all the tenants here at the Casas de Anza and the public, and there's a lot of kids that go in there and play basketball. Who supervises those?
So we don't have it open to the general public because of the fact that we do not have personnel to be there and supervise. So what we do have, though, is, for example, early in the morning before Centro Comunitario starts with their workshops, we do offer zumba. And our custodial staff goes and unlocks the door early in the morning for that teacher. Before that teacher's gone, we have the next one going in from Centro Comunitario. We have a big gap in between where we don't have anybody in there, and since we do not have somebody to actually supervise like you're asking, that door remains locked until the next one comes in. Then we have volunteers, like I said, offering basketball clinics, basketball sessions, Tuesdays afternoon, Thursday afternoon, it's all on a schedule. But when the gym is not being used for a specific activity, it is not open to public, because we don't have anybody there actually sitting there taking care of the gym responsible.
Yeah, because a lot of kids, you know, they don't want to go, they don't want to go on a scheduled routine, you know, like have to go Wednesday and do exercise. They want to go whenever they have a chance or whenever they want to go play basketball, whatever. And they don't want to go do the exercises or taking some kind of class. But the confusing thing here is, since the city took over the Housing Authority, that they were always saying that the facilities that owned by the Housing Authority belong to the city. So they were going to be managed by the city, like Parks and Rec would be managing the gymnasium. I don't know what changed that, or if there's any changes or any policy regarding that issue. Have you heard anything? Who organizes the events there at the Housing Authority, like basketball tournaments and stuff like that?
We do not have basketball tournaments, not since I've been there. Prior to me coming in, as a matter of fact, there's keys everywhere around the community for that facility. And the only way we could obtain control of that was to change all the locks. We have three keys. They're all within NHA. Centro Comunitario Los Nogales do not even have their own key to go in. Like I said, we provide the access for that same reason. Ultimately, the responsibility lies on us. When it comes to the city versus the Housing Authority, it goes back to what Mr. Estes mentioned earlier about using federal monies to maintain it, so it belongs to priority to NHA and the tenants.
That's the other question.
Unless that can be changed, Mr. Estes, I'm not sure.
I haven't looked into the actual ownership of the facilities, but typically, the Housing Authority would have control of whether the city owns the actual building and land, the Housing Authority would be the entity that manages and controls every aspect of those facilities.
Well, HUD actually doesn't intervene in those areas, like the gymnasium and the other facility, because those are, as far as I know, they're not funded by HUD. Otherwise, I don't, do they find you to maintain the building?
If they're not funded by HUD, then we need to go back in the city. We need to reimburse Nogales Housing Authority for maintenance and utility.
With a youth grant and CDBG funds, it was never funded by HUD. So I don't know in your annual budget, if you allocate any funding for maintenance of the gymnasium? Is HUD allowing that for you to do that?
It's not specific for the gymnasium when it comes to actual maintenance, but in our five-year capital, yes, it is. There's projects to maintain the gym. The AC units, the painting, the stripping of the floors, everything, yes, it is included in our actual capital funding through that. I also included on the bar in the back of your folders where you have the HUD section, there is a copy of the deed of trust and that both facilities are included within those properties, Mr. Estes.
Yeah, because HUD will not intervene with the decisions taken by the Housing Authority and the City of Nogales. They'll, you know, they'll just let the Housing Authority and the city make their own policies and agree to their own terms, so.
Well, maybe those need to be established.
They don't, they don't, as far as I can recall, they never intervene with us regarding the use of the gymnasium, as long as it's available to the tenants, to the residents of the Housing Authority. I can't remember the percentage, but, you know, if they're not interested in attending those classes, at least you can have like a paper trail where you send out flyers and asking, telling them that the gymnasium and those classes are available to the tenants, and they are the first ones, they have the priority. Thank you.
Mr. Bernier, you had something? Pablo, you had something?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. I would like to see more transparency with these different I would like to see more transparency with these different, speaking about Circles of Peace. When this deal was made with Circles of Peace, it was not presented to the chairman or commissioners when this deal was made with Circles of Peace. I believe that there are other entities that would like an opportunity to use this, this building also. So what did you call that, that document, the Declaration of Purpose of Use?
The Deed of Trust?
Yeah, no, the, what, what Circles of Peace provided for you, how they're going to.
Oh, a declaration of interest for the use of.
Okay, and I, I think that we can get other, other entities in here and do a presentations and we can vote on it and see who can, can, what program we like. Because when this, this, this contract was made with Circles of Peace, it was never brought to the commissioners for voting, it was just done. They, they made an agreement and I felt that other entities could have used that, that, that room also, but they weren't given the opportunity. I'm just going at this as, as far as transparency issue. Because we can, we can bring in other entities. I know for a fact that I'm getting lobbied by two other entities to use this, this building. And I like their ideas and I think they should have a shot in presenting their ideas, their program. And if we'd like them, we will go with them, if not, we'll stay with, with Circles of Peace. But last time, the way the deal was made, it was never bought, it was never bought to the board.
Go ahead, Commissioner Doh, your mic, please.
Thank you. One of the things that I noticed, noticing, and maybe legal, can shed a little more light on it. Circles of Peace does have a million-dollar liability insurance covering anything that might happen there when, when they're there, I guess, involved with the kids. Would that, would that, would that be something that, that this council should consider from other entities? That they also be insured? Absolutely, and not just in this circumstance. Anytime somebody uses a, a city facility for a, a program or activity, they should have insurance that, that names the city as an additional insured. And we can make sure that those requirements are spelled out in the, in any license agreement that, that we do. But yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And in response to Councilmember Bonilla's statement, you know, or sorry, Commissioner, or Board here. You know, the Board can, can open this up and can, can do an RFP and, and ask for proposals for, for, for uses and stuff. And it would be up to the Board to determine what, what the Board thinks is the, is the best use for these facilities that provide the best programming and different things like that. I would just suggest that, you know, going forward, that the, that the Commission does, you know, requires that these, these entities come in and, and provide updates and presentations, at least on an annual basis, to come in and say, you know, this, this is what we did this last year, this is how many participants we had, this is how many housing participants participated. These are the programs we offered. And so the, the Commission is always updated and has that, that transparency and the information. And they're, they're providing it back to you.
Mayor.
Commissioner.
Mr. Estes, first of all, all the information that we've kind of inquired here is in the packet, so thank you. Having said that, I've visited Circles of Peace and also the Centro a couple of times, actually. Circles of Peace, I'm, I'm pretty much go frequently. And my question to Maritza is, and I, I guess you just answered earlier, would, are they taking up any programs that the housing has offered? Because for me, I'm very elated that Circles of Peace and the Centro offer these programs. And I have asked Blanca if it's open to, to the residents. And she says that they're always, you know, it's always open to them. Also, el Centro is always open to the residents. So they've also, you know, on social media, their, their presence is, is there, inviting people. They have flyers that go out to the residents, so they haven't closed it up to anyone. It's all, like you say, they're always invited, the residents have priority in a, to attend these programs that they offer. My question is, I have no problem they, that they're offering these programs, Mr. Estes. I think they're great to the community. I don't see that they're taking up any programs that you might be offering. So I think that to discourage them would be, you know, detrimental to the city of Nogales. We want programs to be offered to the community. And like I said, I take advantage of these programs myself. And I see a lot of multi-age participants, from elderly to the young kids, present in these, in these activities that they offer throughout the community. So my question is, a legal question, is that I know that this came about because Maritza, Mrs. Edvans, had mentioned that there was no contract. So I know that you worked on something, I've talked to you a little bit about it. So thank you for providing the details that you did. So I, I'm not sure what we need to do today in terms of like, I don't want, because Blanca called me from Circles of Peace and she was very concerned about we not allowing them to be there. The space is limited here in Nogales. And she's willing to do whatever it takes to continue using that facility. So as long as we, you know, cross our Ts, our Is legally, I think that we should, you know, pursue, you know, the avenue we've been pursuing. And this contract, and you know, I was, I looked at this a couple of days. So this whole thing about Circles of Peace, where was it? Did I loan it to you on another contract? Oh, it's an order, that was back in 2022. So it did come to the council, I was on the council, in fact. So, you know, it was signed by the mayor then and, and the attorney then. So they've had a, a contract and they, and we did approve it because there's an order here. So, so, you know, where, where do we go from here?
Right, and that, and that agreement's expired and my direction.
But they did have a contract.
My, my direction to Maritza is, we, we don't, don't change anything. Keep businesses normal until we get everything finalized and updated and stuff. So nobody's being told that they can't provide anything. Everybody's doing everything the, the way they've been doing it, there's, you know. But, and we don't need any.
Action.
Specific motion or action, just direction to staff to move forward with establishing the policies and preparing the, the various license agreements to bring back. And also, you know, we may need a motion if, if council, or sorry, commission does wish to, as a commission, put out for an RFP to see if there's other potential entities or things that, that we want to consider at this time, since we don't have any current agreements, now would be a good time to, to look at that. Otherwise, then we'll enter into agreements. And then once those agreements expire, then you can do an RFP. So it's totally up to the commission as to how you want to handle those, those, those matters. But as of now, yeah, we're keeping the status quo, they're using the facilities, you know. We're still just requiring the same basic things that we've required up until this point. We just wanted to bring this to the commission's attention, that, you know, we, we need to do these things. And I don't think there's any objection from the commission to work on establishing, you know, a use policy and also a license, form of license agreement that we can bring back to the commission and get the commission to approve those things and then implement those with, with whatever entities the commission wishes to, to do.
Commissioner Doh.
What I'm hearing, then, we need to keep the word contract out of the, in other words, it's more of an agreement with a light, with a, going with a license and, and the director being in charge of the scheduling of, of everything that goes on there.
No, you can use the word contract. I just, I'm not using the word lease.
Well, okay.
A license agreement is a contract. It's a written agreement to, to have certain terms and conditions, so.
There you go.
Yeah, I would just stay away from and not use what, what has been proposed or talked about, which was a, a lease of the facility. You want a license agreement that allows them to use the facility during specific times and stuff. Because like I said, typically a lease would entail the, the complete exclusive use of the facility.
And my next question is, under those terms and conditions, would, would the director be the one in charge of selecting how many entities can use that in order to fit the scheduling? Otherwise, it might get, you know, overburdened.
For a, a one-time use, somebody wants to come in and do a, a program or something? Yeah, absolutely, the director would be the one that would be responsible for, if we've seen that. But we're, what we're talking about is a, a constant continual use during specified hours on a regular, permanent-type basis. And that type of agreement needs to come to the commission for approval because that would then entail doing a license agreement as opposed to filling out an application to use the, the facility for a, you know, a one-time basketball tournament or, or something like that. That would be under the, the guise of the, the director as, as she or he manages those things. And that would also be addressed in the policy. I think the current policy provides for, you know, allowing for that, that, that they just submit a request to use the facility. And so what we would do as part of that policy, then we would also have a, a form that they would fill out for that use, identifying that, you know, even those one-time uses, they should have insurance that covers the, the city as an additional insured. You can get one-time special activity insurance, it's not very expensive. But if somebody's putting on a, a program or using our facilities, we want to make sure that the city's protected from any injury or harm that may happen. So for example, if somebody wants to use the gym to do a, a small little local, you know, basketball tournament or something like that, where you have different groups playing against each other for a day or even two days, that, you know, that, that we have a dedicated application process. We identify the, the insurance requirements and different things like that.
Okay, last question. That, that doesn't affect what Vice, well, Commissioner Mojorcas mentioned about kids just wanting to go and, and use the facility of the gym to play, just, you know, like after school or a basketball game between cert, you know, certain residents there of the.
Correct, that's, that has nothing to do with just the, the facility resident uses of, of the, the facilities. I mean, just like if they were walking through the parking lot and something happened, you know, the Housing Authority's insurance, or if that's insured through the city, that insurance would, would, would kick in. This is for specific outside agencies or organizations that want to use the, the Housing Authority or city's facilities for a, a specific purpose.
Thank you, you just explained it pretty clear, appreciate it.
Commissioner Bonilla.
Thank you, Chairman. I still believe that we need to open this up, Mr. Estes, to the public. And I think we should have presentations done by different entities. From what I remember, it was not opened up to the public, to other entities, when it was, when it was leased to Circles of Peace. I know this for a fact because I remember when it was, when it was done, it was never open to the public or to other entities, it was only done for Circles of Peace. So I think this time around, although I'm not, although Circles of Peace has done an excellent job, I think we should give other entities a chance to do their presentation.
And again, that, that is a commission decision. This is a work session, so there's no action to be taken today. We can have that direction to start with the policies and, and things, which I think is, is pretty clear. And then if that's the direction from, from the commission, we can include a, an agenda item at the next meeting to provide for, as, you know, preparing and, and issuing an RFP for, for proposals for the use of the facilities, if that's the, the commission's desire.
What, what I suggest, you know, legal, is that we do, I think we have to do something in order to make sure that, because they're still using the facility, make sure their, their insurance continues to cover it. I think we have to do an agreement with them, you know, I'm going to say, as soon as possible, because otherwise their insurance will not, you know.
We can still obtain insurance from them regardless of whether or not we have a, a detailed agreement. We can make sure that the director makes, contacts them and, and lets them know that we need a, an updated insurance policy that lists the city of Nogales or the Housing Authority as the additional insured for the continued use while we work through these, through these things.
Okay, go ahead.
Maritza, I'm looking at the, the workshops that, they're great, what you offer, the naturalization and citizenship classes. The only little issue I have with is that November 20 parade in Oales Sonora. If that's going to be part of the workshops and presentations, I think November 11th should be included, that's Veterans Day.
And we could speak to the group, they were just adding what they participate in, but I couldn't let them know.
Who's in charge of this group?
Susana, Angel, and Maria Lena, they signed the declaration.
Where's that?
Do you have any?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We're way past our time, but another option I was also going to put up there under exploring options was to look at NHA's budget and see if we could create a part-time position of somebody just supervising the gym, to have it open to the tenants during the time when services are not rendered by Centro Comunitario Los Nogales or such.
Yeah, under those HUD regulations, I think the, they are, the Housing Authority is being funded, but they're going through the capital grant program. So I'm guessing that you could probably hire somebody through, through the capital grant.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any suggestions? It takes Mr. Bonillas to put it out and, or do you want to bring it out to where we continue to work with, with Circles of Peace and continue the program while we? Go ahead. Do you guys want to continue working with Circles of Peace? Should we? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think we should follow the, the attorney's recommendation to just continue, continue working as it is. And then we bring it to the next board meeting and put it on the, on the agenda and see what changes we can do. But as far as the continuance of these programs, you know, let them, let them, let them be right now. And maybe just an update on their insurance.
Yeah, so we'll make sure that everything stays a status quo. And then at the next agenda, we'll have an, an action item for council to have discussion and, or sorry, commission to have discussion and potential action with regard to whether or not you want to go out to RFP or if you want to continue with, with the two agencies that you already have in place.
Go ahead. Okay, we could do that.
And we can notify them and, and let them know that that will be on the agenda.
Commissioner Doh.
Well, I, I would like to hear the director's recommendation or opinion, whether, not necessarily today, but maybe in the next meeting, what, what makes it easier for you and your staff to be able to organize all, all, all these entities and put them together and, and give us a little more light on, shed a little more light on, on the, the reality of what you face. And that, that's, that's my recommendation.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
One final comment, is there other entities interested in the use of these facilities that you know of? Or maybe we can reach out to other entities and before we make any changes, make it available for everybody in the community?
I have not received any requests for the use, the long-term, as these organizations have provided the services. One-time use, yes, but not long-term.
So maybe it'd be a good time right now to notify other nonprofit entities that the the facilities are available on certain dates of the of the month.
On that, Mr. Estes, would that go out as an RFP? If we're looking for other organizations or?
Yeah, we can have that discussion at the 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 board meeting where where the commission can take action. But the other question would be is if you want to go out for RFP. And then you, when you go out to RFP, it it's a public notification. And then you can reach out to specific organizations, say, look, we're we're looking for proposals for the use of these facilities, what do you do, is this something you want to respond to? It would be published, it would be noticed and stuff like that, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Maritza.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? Move to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Favor, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
We'll follow up with uh our budget meeting. Anybody need to take a five-minute break? Okay.